Give them some money in their pocket and then we can be certain that the truck is actually strapped. So we know that it's gone from the port and we know it's gone to the region. We can be certain that it's no longer giving out harmful emissions in the entire region, not just in the port, but in all of Southern California. So it's a great program because it's a very clear indicator that this truck is gone. And the truck is of course appreciated because they get $5,000.
Right. I think you said in the past it's a win-win situation.
Yes.
Thanks for showing me. It's amazing out here. Think you're hip on what's green and what's not? Then name the top three alternative sources of power. I'll give you the answer by the end of the show.
Got an old couch, mattress, TV, or other bulky item that you need to get rid of? Do you live in an apartment in the city of Los Angeles? Then make a call and we will haul. Call 311 and the Bureau of Sanitation will pick up your old couch, mattress, TV, fridge, or other bulky item. And best of all, it's free. Remember, make the call, 311, and we will haul. This message has been brought to you by the Bureau of Sanitation, Department of Public Works, City of Los Angeles. Love LA. Keep it clean.
The Port of LA is going even greener by the usage of the world's most powerful, short-range, heavy-duty electric truck. This high-tech hauler can tow a fully-loaded 40-foot container all on electric power. Hey, thanks, Henry, for showing me this new truck here. Tell me what makes this thing green?
So basically, what we have here is the first-of-its-kind, fully-electric, zero-emissions truck designed specifically for port application. This truck is going to Port of LA to move containers around. Like I said, it's fully-electric, so there's zero-tail pipe gases coming out. What we've done is we've taken an existing chassis similar to what you would see in a diesel format at the Port of LA. And we've basically put in a proprietary drivetrain in there that's fully-electric. Converts what you see here are two battery banks on each side. In here are 336 volts of DC power. That our electronics, which I will show you in a moment underneath the truck, converts it to AC voltage that runs the electric motor through the Allison transmission.
And then cost, for example, cost per mile for this versus a traditional diesel truck?
I think this one is about 20 cents per mile versus a couple bucks in the diesel format.
Wow, so that's a big savings.
It's a big savings.
And it's cleaning the air.
Exactly.
All right. What else we got here?
So what we have is, like I said, it's battery banks on either side. And what I'll do is I'll lift our cab.
So that's heart right there.
Unfortunately, you can only see the top of it. But what you see here is what we've done is we've removed basically where the diesel engine would sit. And in its place now is a couple of enclosures with all of our electronics on there. We water cool all of our electronics, so you see some hoses running around for water cooling up the electronics.
So this thing can pull a regular container like a normal diesel truck?
Exactly.
Oh, that's perfect.
Only that we do it with zero emissions.
Right, right. How long has the business been going and who came up with the design?
So we were approached back in 2005 with this idea, this concept. Can we build an electric truck that can tow 60,000 pounds?
Yeah.
We were then got a grant from Port of LA and the Air Quality Management District for $527,000 to see, to build a prototype. And we proved that we could actually do it.
Right, right. Well, it looks like you guys stepped up to the challenge here. I mean, how does it make you feel and what do you think it's gonna, how it's gonna change the industry? Or for the Port of LA for that matter?
Well, I think it's great. You know, they're looking to really clean the air for the community, the surrounding community here. And this is, I just, I think it's a great opportunity for us. I think the timing is great. You know, the rise in fuel prices, everything sort of came together in the perfect timing. And we're just glad to be able to help the environment and actually create jobs here. You know, there's all around us businesses going out of business. We're actually hiring people, bringing jobs to our community. So we're cleaning out the air and we're creating jobs. It's a win-win for everybody.
That's right. Where we're going, we don't need any roads. That's a quote from Back to the Future. The 1985 film starred Michael J. Fox and focused on the ability to travel back in time, yet still know what was soon to come in the future. Enter the Transporter, a 53-foot, fully-contained, mobile exhibit that not only brings our past into focus, but provides Los Angeles residents with a glimpse into the future. The Transporter is an interactive exhibit that focuses on the history, cargo, equipment, jobs, and environmental programs of the Port of Los Angeles, the nation's number-one container port. I toured this ultra-hit museum on wheels and cannot help but to be fascinated with all the cool things it had to offer. These look like big Legos. What are these, Sheila?
They're actually containers. Everyone wants to know what's in a container when they see it run down the freeway. Scan it, find out.
Oh, there you go.
Teddy bears.
Oh, cool. So you can, so at the port, they have a scanner that x-rays the, to see what's inside each container?
That's one of the security measures, yes. Yes. And then there's an inventory as well. Most of the inventory comes through the Marine Exchange and the port pilots before the ships arrive into port. So they have an idea of what's in each of the containers.
Yeah, right. So you can have anything in here from shoes to clothes to TVs? Now, is this new technology at the port for this?
It is fairly new. It is fairly new and, you know, nationwide.
Yeah, look at that. That's cool.
So many new things that's used every day. Your coffee table, your teddy bears, your TVs, your iPods, even food containers.
190 TVs, $250,000 worth of gear in this container?
In one container.
Right. That's wild. How many containers come through the port every day?
Um, it depends on the ships, the number of the ships, and the size of the ships. Ships can take anywhere from 13,000 to 16,000 containers on one vessel. So it just depends on what's being unloaded at our stop.
That is cool.
Hey, James, do you like maps?
Yeah, I love maps. See this big one right here?
This is a map for you. This map will actually identify trade routes.
To Asia, to Australia, to South America. So let's hit to South America.
It will tell you where it's coming, where its destination.
Right.
The type of ship. Give you an idea of the cargo, the items on board, the number of containers that will actually be unloaded, and the hours in port.
Wow, these guys are only in here for a day.
For a day. Because when a ship's not moving, it's not making money. So they want to get in and get out.
Right, right. In and out.
In and out.
Oh, that's cool. So you got the ride here from LA down to Chile?
Down to Chile.
Well, that's cool. Ooh, what's this over here, Sheila?
This is our crane game. Every day, high-skilled, longshore workers move cargo from ships to shore. And here's your opportunity to try it.
So this simulates taking a container off a ship and sticking it onto a truck?
Exactly.
Oh, nice. So let me give it a go.
Give it a go. It's not as easy as it looks.
All right. Still want to go in the water?
Don't go in the water.
So what am I doing here?
Okay, you're gonna lift your joystick controls over the trolley. And then you move it down. Good, you're right on target.
Yeah, we're on.
Good job. Now you bring it up. Press the button on the right joystick. That'll bring it up. Now pull back. Okay.
To the truck?
To the truck.
Oh, yeah.
It should be right below.
Oh, nice. This is gonna be the most popular bid in the whole exhibition?
No doubt. Okay, watch the shadow. Okay, now you slowly lower. Slowly, 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 and...
We are in?
You're in.
This is cool.
Hey, you may have a new car.
That's great, man. That's fun. Who says what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas? Up next, check out Port of LA's Fan Fair Fountains, where beauty, nature, and a green environment create one heck of a show. Nightlife at the port takes on a whole new meaning. From the Grand Palace at the Bellagio in Las Vegas to the doorstep of the Port of Los Angeles. Fan Fair Fountain is a fixture of the Gateway Plaza in San Pedro, California. The fountain employs 58 choreographed water jets that dance to the beat of an eclectic mix of music. Fan Fair features 13 different works of music that reflect the diversity of San Pedro and the city of Los Angeles. Designed by a local company called Wet, Fan Fair is 250 feet long and 100 feet wide, and contains 400,000 gallons of recycled water. Shooting streams of over 100 feet high makes it the largest water feature in the state of California. And back to our portfolio quiz. Do you have the answer to the following question? What are the top three types of alternative power? If you guessed ethanol, natural gas, and electricity, then you're on point. If not, get your Google on and do your homework. Today, we've had a chance to check out how innovation and technology is moving the Los Angeles port towards a greener environment and creating a new world order for port operations. I hope you've enjoyed this edition of Portfolio. Hit us up next time, where we'll explore more of the latest happening at the Port of Los Angeles. With all the innovation, clean air technology, and the coolness factor, why would you even think about missing our next edition? This is your portfolio host, James Ramirez. Good morning. Emergency Preparedness Patrol, is your family prepared for disaster?
Mom!
Emergencies can strike at any time. That's why it's important to have a family emergency plan in case you're separated during a disaster. Have an emergency supply kit ready with non-perishable food items such as dry goods, canned goods, and water. Don't forget extra medication for elderly family members. And extra pet food, too. Include a first aid kit, a battery-operated radio, extra batteries, and of course, a waterproof flashlight. And to reduce the risk of serious injury, fasten all freestanding items securely, including water heaters. This family gets a passing grade for being prepared. Emergency Preparedness. It's an LA thing. Have you ever hailed a taxi cab and jumped in without even looking to see if the cab was an authorized city cab? Illegal taxi cabs have become a serious problem here in Los Angeles. These illegal taxis are known as bandit taxi cabs. They're called bandits because they steal passengers away from the city's legitimate certified taxi cabs. Bandit taxi cabs may look like legitimate taxis, but they're not. These cabs are uncertified and many are simply too dangerous to be riding in. Our city's legal taxi cabs are identified by the Los Angeles City Department of Transportation Seal, located here on the front doors. This seal means the taxi is legal. It's inspected, and the driver is trained and properly insured. Remember, you're literally placing your life into the hands of a driver each and every time you jump into a taxi.
As a passenger, I wouldn't want to get into a car where I don't know the driver and don't know what the driver's capable of and what he's, what he's planning. Our drivers are fingerprinted and their criminal history is reviewed, their DMV driving record is reviewed. So we know who the drivers are. We know what they've been involved in. And if you have a disagreement with a licensed driver, you have some recourse.
These illegal drivers may have a criminal background, and unsuspecting passengers can easily become victims of crime. The Taxi Cab Division enforces taxi cab violations and along with the Los Angeles Police Department are authorized to make arrests of bandit drivers. Often when we do our enforcement operations against bandit taxi cabs, we find that they have a variety of weapons, illegal drugs, you name it. They have knives, guns.
When this driver was arrested, he was found with his baseball bat, which can be a very lethal weapon. I don't think he was coaching softball with this bat.
Make sure you know the taxi you're riding in is safe and legal.
Bandit drivers are not regulated by anybody. Many times, they may have been convicted of various crimes. As a matter of fact, if somebody would list on the side of such a vehicle the crimes that that individual could have been convicted of or may have been convicted of, I don't think anybody would want a member of their family to get into one of these vehicles.
In 1999, this bandit taxi cab driver attempted to run a railroad crossing. The taxi cab was literally cut in half by the oncoming train. Sadly, the driver and five of his passengers were killed. Many of these bandit drivers have been known to overcharge their passengers with altered taxi meters and other illegal methods.
One time I was in Hollywood and I got in one of these bandit cabs. And shortly after traveling a few blocks, I noticed that, hey, this price is like two, three, four times more than the, more than the regular taxifair. And I discussed the issue with the guy. I said, "Excuse me, do you charge certain amount of dollars, money for the certain amount of, you know, the per mileage?" And he said, "Why are you asking the question?" I said, "Well, because I'm a taxi driver myself, and this doesn't seem right. I'm just traveling a couple of blocks and it's already $5." And then he right away, you know, told me, "Okay, I'm gonna turn off the meter. Don't you worry about it." I mentioned I know what the distance I'm going and I have the idea how much it would cost me. Once people get in a cab that is charging so much money, they're really scared.
Take the time to look for this official city seal.
As you can see here, this is a pretty typical sort of phony decal that a lot of bandits put on their cabs. What they've done is they've taken a decal, it's about the size of a legal decal, and put it right in the spot on the door where it's supposed to be. Only as you can see, it doesn't have the city hall on it or the lettering from the Department of Transportation.
There are many legitimate taxi cabs and taxi services operating throughout the city of Los Angeles. Inside the taxi cab, you'll find the driver's photo, name, and company clearly displayed.
Legitimate companies are regulated by the city of Los Angeles. The fares are set by the city. The meters are controlled and calibrated. Bandit taxi cab operators follow no rules. They charge whatever they want. Their meters may, they may not have meters altogether, or if they have meters, they can be very fast. They may have zappers that accelerate the pulses. So in the end, one does not know until the fare is over how much is gonna be charged for that trip.
In the event of a dispute, passengers can file a complaint with the company or the Los Angeles City Department of Transportation's Taxi Cab Division. The Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners also holds monthly public meetings to decide upon taxi cab rules and policies and to review the concerns of the community.
If I was tricked by these bandit cabs, I can imagine how hard it is for the regular people to be, to identify these cars.
Army the public with knowledge about bandages is what's gonna be important. We'll make the difference. We'll return the tide. Without that, I don't believe that we're ever gonna get rid of this problem.
Don't let bandit taxi cabs take you for a ride. Your life may depend on it. Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
LA City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, the 19th of May, 2010. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Want to welcome our guests that are here in council chambers, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts these meetings for your convenience, live, and then rebroadcast them through the city's cable system each evening as well. We're also available through two other media, through your computer at la-city.org. You can click on links to helpful city departments and services to improve the quality of life in Los Angeles, as well as our agendas for today's meetings, which are available in person. But also at our city's homepage is live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. We archive all of our past council meetings as well, so you can watch video of any of our past council meetings. And finally, through your telephone, you can call the following number, (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. And through that, you can listen in to the council or any of our committee meetings as well. Want to thank council members who are here on time for quorum. We do have 11 members, so Madam Clerk, on your penultimate attempt, will you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Wizar, Kretz, Cory, and Labange Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weston, Zion Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I appreciate our sergeant's at arms, but if we could please wind our conversations down as much as possible so we can begin our business today. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zion moves, Mr. Weston seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Kretz moves, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. Let's run through the agenda for today, please.
Our first items on the agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. There's a request to continue item number nine for one week, and that would be May 26th.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing number nine for one week? Seeing none, we will continue number nine.
And also on number one, item number one, no action is required.
Okay, no action required on one. And any specials, I guess let's hold two, three, and four on the desk until we have 12 members, as those are ordinances, we're still awaiting Mr. Wizar and Mr. Alarcon, who are expected and are late right now. If they can come down as soon as possible, we can take up those items. That leaves us five through eight. Items five through eight, anybody wishing to call those special from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Other than eyes?
If we can send eight forthwith, without objection. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are items 10 through 21. 10 votes are required for consideration, those have not had public hearing. There's a commissioner on item number 10, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold 10 on the desk. If there's no objection, we'll consider all of them.
And I believe there are cards on 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, and 21.
Okay, Mr. Kretz?
If I could call item 19 special for Ms. Han.
Okay. Ms. Han is excused today, but she's coming in. Mr. Han calls 19 special and 20 for Ms. Perry. Those will all be held on the desk then. We do have 12 members, if we can go back to items two through four. Let's take those up now. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Why don't we go ahead and take up the commissioner, and then we'll go up to, we'll go to general public comment. If I can ask Ms. Hawkins to come on forward, and want you to join us here at the desk. And Mr. Smith is, I think just shortly here, want to thank you for volunteering to join the police permit review panel. Why don't you give us a little idea of some of your background and interests, and then we'll move to see if there's any questions from the council members. And just before you start, if I can just reiterate one more time, if we can please wind our conversations down, or if you can step outside the chambers to continue those as much as possible so we can listen to the business at hand. Thank you again, Ms. Hawkins.
Good morning, my name is actually Angela Haskins.
Haskins, sorry.
H-A-S-K-I-N-S. And I am a partner with Baker Keener and Nara, a litigation firm here in downtown Los Angeles. I also live at Bunker Hill, and I am the president-elect of the Women Lawyers Association of Los Angeles. I was asked if I would be interested in the opportunity that has been created, and I indicated that I would be. I have done quite a bit of volunteering privately and within the legal community, and I thought there's probably no better time than now to step up and do a little for the city as well.
We have some cards from the public for comments for the council on this, so just sit tight for a second. John Walsh is our first speaker, then Arnold Sachs, and then Matt Dowd. Why don't we take those public comments at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. We get 3,000 unsuccessful hits without that S. You know, this sounds like an unimportant, third-tier, let's-not-pay-attention-to-it appointment. I want to say to the people out there, this woman is going to decide whether your life is going to be a living hell or not. Because the police permit people give permits to nightclubs and bars that destroy our lives. They destroy our quality of lives. Now, it hasn't been too bad, except in Hollywood. I live two blocks from the W., and I hear the music all night. They went to the Police Permit Review Board, and they were told there'd be no noise. I want you to understand that she, I want you to understand when you're on there, that the nightclub owners lie to you, lie to you, lie to you. HollywoodHighlands.org, keep the noise down. Don't give them permits. One minute.
Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that is Matt Dowd.
Good morning.
Yes, thank you, good morning. Congratulations on your appointment. My question kind of expands on your role, because there was just a story in the newspaper with a police commission that reviews force used by police officers, that they lag in reporting the results of their inquiries. Is there a lag, is there a lag with the permits that you might offer? Do you see any kind of way to influence or interact with the fact that this lag in reporting could raise like an oil slick to the rest of the police department's actions involving public and private enterprise? Do you think that you might be able to find some way to influence the fact that these failure to report on a timely manner should result in some kind of penalty that would reflect some openness for the public? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Matt Dowd is our last speaker on item number 10. Good morning.
Yes, thank you, good morning, and John Walsh is right. I'm Matt Dowd, though, first of all, Venice Beach. But he's right about this one, because this is a massive problem, and here's my experience. I live down on Venice Beach, right on the Speedway there, and there's bars at the bottom of Washington Boulevard, and it's in Bill Rosendale's district, and this is what's happening. They close at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning on a Friday, Saturday night, and all these drunken people come wandering by your house at 2:00 in the morning, making a hell of a racket, because they're all drunk. That's what he's talking about, and it's really not the bar owner's fault, but they don't care. They'll kick everybody out the door, because they made their money. So it's a massive responsibility, and I'm sorry that you have to be involved with the city of Los Angeles, because they didn't even spell your name right. That's the kind of incompetence we're dealing with here. Thank you, Channel 35.
Thank you, that'll close our general public comment. Council members wish to ask any further questions? Seeing none, we will take a vote, Ms. Haskins. Let's go ahead and open the roll on the nomination. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Congratulations, and again, thank you so much for offering your service to the people of Los Angeles. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
If we can go to our general public comment now, this is for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. Dr. Rochelle Bozeman is our first speaker. She'll be followed by Paul Gamberg. We have our clock there to help folks guide their time for two minutes of public comment. Again, if we can please try to keep our conversations to a minimum. Shhh. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Bozeman.
Good morning, I'm Dr. Rochelle Bozeman, and I'm representing Trinity Baptist Church of Los Angeles. I'm here to inform you that a well-kept secret is now out. Trinity Baptist Church, for the last 12 years, has funded a summer work youth employment program that has employed youth of the soft Los Angeles area. The congregation has pledged funding to pay the salaries. What we look for are the employers to place the young people. Over the past 12 years, we have placed 240 young people. We have paid their salaries, and all we're looking for are partners to assist us in giving them employment. They work four days a week, they are paid for, they work seven hours a day, they are supervised, the church does the paperwork, we do the social security, the workman's comp. All we're looking for are placements where we can supervise their work. So we're asking the city of Los Angeles to partner with us as we continue this venture, and we hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bozeman. Thank you for coming in. Paul Gamberg is our next speaker. After Mr. Gamberg will be Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, council members. I came down here today, first of all, in recognition and thanking you for the incredible hard job you're all doing to maintain a sense of vision and public purpose and policy in the face of extreme adversity. In a, it's like boxing with a marshmallow with your feet in quicksand. And I just, for one, wanted to let you know that even though I have one or two quick comments to make in asking for something else, that it's important that you continue the hard and good work. The next thing is about purpose, that we shouldn't lose sight as we go through this morass of budget crisis, that we need to keep the vision of L.A. alive. L.A. is different than New York and Chicago, we should not emulate another city. That will apply to art causes and our own history. We got to preserve the historical fabric of L.A. And finally, about process, a number of people were prepared to come down here on item nine. Item nine is kind of slipshod, it's the public dollar leases that are being changed. And the problem here is that, I spoke to an old friend who's been an activist in the Echo Park area since, oh, at least 40 years, of Mary Ann Hayashi, who knew nothing about it, and she's an exhibit, you know? So there's a problem in communication and process. When you suddenly let go of an item at the 11th hour, at 3:00 o'clock, there were a lot of people who were planning to be here, that suddenly had to change gears, and they're getting numb. The folks out there in nonprofit land are just getting numb. And I just want you to be aware of that and include them in your discussions when you make policy about them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gamberg. Nice to see you. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that will be John Walsh.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Burt Road, Elsarena, Northeast L.A. What's happening to the neighborhood councils? Well, they're going to be merged to join the Community Development Department, but who's going to be in charge of that? Oh, an ex-CRA chief operating officer. What does this mean? Somewhat like having the city clerk hold the elections. What was the performance of the elections for the neighborhood councils recently? Pretty poor. Why? No outreach, there's no commitment when somebody else steps in and takes over. So what will happen when we're merged with the community development? Oh, there's a little clause in there that says the community development can assign almost any of the responsibilities of the neighborhood councils to nonprofits. Well, we have quite a bit of experience with various nonprofits. Remember, 90 neighborhood councils with 15 to 20 people per council operate every month free. Doesn't cost you anything, other than the money that they are paying to usually a community facility, and/or to the communities that they represent. $1,000 here, $200 there. $250 for planting native wildflowers on Ascot Hill. Doesn't do anything for individuals, it does things for the community and the neighborhoods. But we're going to be basically decimated, so maybe after a few years, you won't ever hear about neighborhood councils again. It's a sad state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sachs.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Hello to those 75,000 to 80,000 people watching right now. You know, there's been a rumor that my claim of a half a million hits in six months is psychotic ratings of John Walsh, he has no proof. Here are my analytics. It shows, and I'm giving a copy of it, so you know how good the people out there are at paying attention. October 28th to May 12th, that's six months, 502,978 successful server requests. We give this to Mr. Zion, proof that we don't lie. Incidentally, at HollywoodHighlands.org, we now have a reward for anyone who can give us information leading to the arrest and conviction of the people who robbed Tom Labange. You know, his house was robbed, he lost his computer, I understand he bought it on eBay, it was a $200 computer. We are going to give an award of $9.99 to anyone who can, and I want those criminals out there to know, they better stay away from the rescue, because every time you rob one of these city council people, we're going to raise it to $19, $20, $21, and most of all, we want to talk to Arizona. Yesterday, Arizona said they were going to turn out the lights on us. Did you see that in the media? Some white guy, real white, he had a sign that says, "I'm white and I'm proud." And he runs the power agency there, and he's after you people. Now, I don't ordinarily like you people, but we got to work together. Do you understand what these people, there's children out here, the evil white people who have taken over Arizona say, if we don't hand over all our Mexicans and Central Americans, they're going to steal our electricity. Now, what do you say about that city council? Are you going to bend over and hold your ankles? Hollywood Highland, viva la raza!
Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After Arnold Sachs will be Matt Dowd. Mr. Sachs here? Go on, one, other. Mr. President, while he's walking up there, Mr. Walsh should be admonished not to use language that would disrupt council. Thank you. Mr. Sachs?
Yes, thank you.
Sir, if you could please sit down?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sachs. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Thank you, good morning. With all this discussion regarding the budget that's been in the forefront of news lately, one of the things that would be really nice, and this is according to the head of the Budget and Finance Committee, you only really act on motions that are made by the city council, the rest of it is just smoke and mirrors. But if somebody was to make a motion to start the meetings at 10:00 o'clock, because every 15 minutes that you sit and waste costs... 15 minutes that you sit and waste costs how much to the city government? You're sitting and charged with maintaining and forecasting and balancing a budget, and yet every time you meet, you start your meetings 15, 20 minutes late. According to the agendas, 10 a.m. If you can't make the time, call 1-800-COMMUTE. Tell them where you're starting from. You want to get here at 5 to 10 so that you can make the meeting, and if you have things to do in the morning, then you want to portion your time appropriately. Because if you can't portion your time, and this is a constant thing, then how are people supposed to respect the idea that you can portion and control the city budget? That's how much respect you show for the public. The rules of the council? Last week, I loved that maneuver. Step out into the back room and you won't have a forum. But you do that all the time. And we're told that, oh, you have speakers in the back, so you're part of the council. Which isn't, Mr. President? Are you part of the council? You're not part of the council. You're in, you're out, you're up, you're down. We question that all the time. According to the city, he only answers when somebody steps out of line, not when he's supposed to clarify a position.
Thank you, and I believe the city attorney has clarified other times as well. Rick Nightingale is our next speaker. He's in Van Nuys in our remote. So, very good morning to you, Mr. Nightingale. I'm sorry, Matt Dowd was next. I'm sorry, Mr. Nightingale. His card is up here, and then we'll go to you in just a second. And after that will be Candido Maris after Mr. Nightingale. Good morning again, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, yes, and all the kids from North Hollywood. You can wave now, you're on TV. I'm giving you the time. Go wave, everybody. Thank you. Okay, the guy who was here first to public comment, he had it right. He talked about quicksand and how the city's in quicksand, but let me tell you something, children. I came here in 2006, they were in quicksand in their ankles back then, and we warned them, and we held the lifeline to get out because we said, "Stop copying all the other cities." The guy said it, he said, "You're emulating other cities." Now, here's your English lesson. Emulate means to copy. And I'm here because they copied an ordinance in Santa Monica which banned performers and all these expressions of Venice Beach. And we said, "Stop copying all the other cities. They're putting you in violation of federal law." But what does the City of Los Angeles do? They kept copying other cities. And who did they copy? New York. They copied New York, they put all their pension money into this affordable housing that went bust. The ratings agencies need to listen to this because the city lost all the pension money. They've got a $600 budget deficit every year, and to get over that deficit, they're firing 1,000 workers. 1,000 city workers are being fired because of the incompetence of the city council. And that's, what are you going to do next year when there's a $500 million deficit? Because you've got a pension liability that needs to be restructured. So the ratings agencies, they need to take a closer look at the city because until they restructure and fix these problems, they're going to keep firing people, 1,000 every year at least. They can get the mayor in here, you can talk to anybody, but they're in deep doo-doo. See, if I want to talk about someone who's gay or someone who's a Rhodes Scholar, Tom Labonge will have a fit. He's already crying about it because someone talked about their stall is the burden of his property.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Smith, did you want to respond?
There's a lot of students here. The Los Angeles City Council is prohibited by law from telling our pension system how to invest the money. We can't tell them. It is against the law. We can't even talk about it. So when you say, "We lost the money, we had nothing to do with that investment policy."
Thank you. Rick Nightingale's our next speaker in Van Nuys. Excuse me if we could have order in the chambers, Mr. Dowd? Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale, Van Nuys.
Good morning.
I'll tell you, I don't know how you guys got in this boycott thing, where you had no business opening your big fat mouths. You turn around, are supposed to run the city of Los Angeles. You can't even do that, and then you get involved with Arizona that's trying to solve their problem because you want to be a sanctuary city. You have no business saying nothing. We pay you to turn around and run the city. You can't do that. Over 50% want the same thing as Arizona has. No, you won't do that. Over 60% want, does not want a sanctuary city. No, you don't want to do that. I hope they turn off the electricity. They find some way to shut it off, to shut your mouths up. Why don't you do your job and do it what you're supposed to be doing?
If you could please address the council in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Well, I always do, but this goes beyond that. Because it turns out that I am going to address you as the Mexican mafia. I'm sorry to say, but every one of you people get up and had something to say about it where you have no business. If you want to do it, not being a council and so forth, fine and dandy, as a single person, you have all the right to do that. But when you turn around and do it, the reputation, I mean, for the rest of us that does not agree with you, and we're paying you people, and I thought it was supposed to be majority rules, and the majorities don't like what you're doing, but you do it anyway, you have no business doing it. I'm glad down at Costa Mesa turned around and jumped on the bag wagging against you people. We want a law and order. All we want is what the law says. And really, the law, they only changed it that the police department could turn around and do it. And you people get up and say, "Oh, well, if I'm in the candy store and I'm standing there, they can arrest me." You're a bunch of liars. That's the only problem. The politicians are liars like the president. They don't even read the law, and then they have something to say about it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Candido Maris here in council chambers. Before that, Mr. Reyes, you wanted to briefly say them?
Thank you, Council President. Just points of clarification. One, we are not going to lose electricity because of this. I want to be very clear, I understand, we're not going to lose any electricity. As a matter of fact, we control and own the plants. So that allows us to understand that whatever is being said out there is very misleading. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more public speaker, then we'll go to the recognition, and then we'll go to the next item. Mr. Maris, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Council member Candido Maris, proud resident of the greatest city in the greatest country in the world. I'm also the chairman of the Citizens Unit for Participation in Housing and Urban Development. It was an honor to go before Mr. Westen's committee this morning, where we discussed the consolidation of the Cup Committee into another new committee. So, Mr. Westen, thank you for the kindness that you showed me this morning. Again, I know that cuts need to be made. I still have questions about it, but if we can save the ratepayers' money and the taxpayers' money, we'll do whatever we have to do. The people that I have had the privilege of working with are willing to scrape them off the sidewalks if they have to, Mr. President. So I hope that these individuals will be considered for the new committee. If not, with my health improving, I am available. So if you want a general manager at DWP who will work for 50 cents, I'm willing to work for 50 cents for 90 days, six months. And I'm telling you, there's a great line from the movie Tombstone, hell, it's coming with me. We'll get rid of fraud, waste, and corruption, and we can turn that department around. If not, there's a commissionership that's coming up at DWP, Mr. President, council members. I hope that, based on the history that I've shown before this council, that I can be fair in my decisions and that I will do what's best for the city of this great city. Thank you, Mr. President, council members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maris. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl for an introduction.
[inaudible]
Okay, sure. On item 20 or on the schools that are here? Okay, schools introductions, Mr. Kocorin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking in the audience today, we have many young people who are visiting us from schools throughout the city and seeing democracy in action in the way the Los Angeles city government functions. We're pleased to have all of you here. I'm especially honored as the representative of the Second Council District to introduce to you the fourth grade classes of Mrs. Brand and Mrs. Estrada from Victory Boulevard Elementary School. Stand up, raise your hands.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Zine.
About them. Mrs. Brand, who's the teacher, her son is my plan director, Jonathan Brand, so congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. We're also joined today, it's like class day here, it's all school day in city council. We have a class from Patrick Henry Middle School in Granada Hills here. Stand up, folks. With them is Sean Rivas, who is also active in the neighborhood council out there. We're happy to have Sean here. He's with the school. Derek Neal, who's a teacher of the class. Derek, congratulations. And the principal, Michael Bennett, is here today. The principal Bennett, thank you for being with us. Enjoy your day.
Thank you very much. And we have a third school here as well. Mr. Rosendahl.
Indeed, and the third is always a charm. And the charm today is the Brentwood High School. Will they all stand up for a second? Brentwood High School. And I want to acknowledge that the teachers are the daughters of my rabbi, Leonard Bierman, and they're here. And also, we have, you know, Jackie Castor, who is Every Child Foundation and made it work for the last 10 years and put millions of dollars in it. Her son Bryce is also here. So Brentwood High School, you're great. Good to see you.
Thank you all. Welcome to city council, and we appreciate the introduction. We'd like to reconsider item 20, if we can please open the roll on that, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is before us, if we can take that out of order. And Ms. Perry, like to recognize her. I think she's going to step to the rear of the chambers with some other Trojans for
Thank you very much for the USC band. Let's give them another applause. Mr. President, colleagues, I'm just pleased to be here, that we want to honor a young man that has been a part of this community for several decades. I'm just pleased that USC is in my district. But I think the resolution that Ms. Perry and Mr. Smith are going to talk about will identify the specifics of what he's achieved. But I think from a community standpoint, the fact that he's initiated adoptions of schools, that he has improved not only the campus but the surrounding areas of the campus, which we will all be grateful for. And so I'd like to ask Stephen Sample to come up, president of USC. And I'm joined by Ms. Perry, our border commander on the east side. Mr. Smith, as we said earlier, whose blood is cardinal and gold. And Mr. Kocorin is wearing his USC tie today and is a graduate of 1983. And so these are things that we want to bring the president up and do the formal presentation, and certainly I'm sure there's a number of people who have comments. So, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to join my colleagues here today to celebrate President Sample and his wife Catherine Sample, who have led the university for nearly two decades as its 10th president with style, intelligence, dignity, and grace. They have worked tirelessly to enhance every aspect of the university. It's reputation in academics, community outreach, financial resources, global outreach, building the infrastructure, and restoring the grounds throughout. They have made strengthening USC's community and city ties its highest priority. Engaging local stakeholders in an ongoing dialogue, creating a host of partnerships and programs that have directly benefited the neighborhoods surrounding the university's two campuses, and inspiring a culture of community service that is shared by the university's students, faculty, staff, and all members of the Trojan family. Doctor and Mrs. Sample have transformed the physical landscape of USC's two campuses, conducting the most ambitious capital construction campaign in the university's history, expediting USC's transition from a commuter campus to a residential university, making the campuses ideal environments for teaching, research, reflection, human interaction, and academic life. Doctor Sample's visionary leadership has dramatically advanced the university's academic reputation, making USC one of the most academically selective universities in the nation, stretching students' intellects through the educational concept of breadth with depth, increasing the SAT scores of its incoming freshmen by more than 300 points, elevating USC from 51st to 26th in the annual U.S. News and World Report ranking of United States research universities, causing many to say that USC has progressed further and faster than any other university in America. Doctor Sample has also used his superior fundraising skills to strengthen the university. In fact, he is the only university president to receive five gifts of $100 million or more. He also led the Building on Excellence campaign, which at the time of its conclusion in 2002 was the most successful fundraising campaign in the history of higher education. And Doctor Sample has forged USC into a powerful economic engine, building the university into the largest private employer in the city of Los Angeles. And that deserves a very big hand. An institution which each year generates $5 billion in economic activity for Southern California. Catherine Sample has been the consummate first lady of USC, dedicating herself to the advancement of the university, welcoming some 2,000 guests into the family home every single year, attending and hosting numerous performances, games, campus events, serving on internal and external boards and committees, and representing USC as an ambassador in Southern California and around the world. So today we celebrate two outstanding leaders, Dr. Stephen B. and Catherine Sample, and express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their outstanding service to the University of of Southern California and to the people of the city of Los Angeles. With their exceptional contributions, we are going to declare in just a minute a very special week in their honor. And before we move on, I want to recognize the extended members of the Trojan family who are here with us today. We have Michael Jackson, Vice President of Student Affairs. If you want to rise, Mr. Jackson, so people know where you are. Tom Sales, Vice President of Government and Community Relations. Dean Yannis Yortzis from the Viterbi School of Engineering. Dean Sadan from the School of Dentistry. Dean Jack Knott for the School of Policy and Planning and Development. Dean Karen Gallagher from Rossier School of Education. And Tammy Anderson, Executive Director of the Joint Educational Project. So let's give them all a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. President and Deans. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. You know, when Stephen and Catherine Sample came here from Buffalo, New York, he had a great university, and a lot of people asked him why he would want to come to LA. One thing he said, it wasn't the great weather in LA, although that's certainly better than Buffalo and New York, but he wanted to do something very special. When he met with the search team that was interviewing candidates to be president at USC, they said to him something that really touched what he wanted to do. They said, "USC is a great school. We can be better, and we always want to strive to be better. We never want to stay in the same place." And that's what really captured his imagination, a university who wanted to be better than LA was. Because most universities in America, their thought was get to a place where they were comfortable and stay there, just stay there. USC didn't want to stay there. So he came to USC with that idea in mind. He focuses attention on doing something different. We wanted to look at USC is not doing what the other competitors are doing, where they're going, but do something special and different that makes it a very special place. They understood that you can't copy your way to excellence, as he says, rather true excellence can be achieved only through original thinking and unconventional approaches. With that mantra in mind, and his team of deans and administration, they took the University of Southern California to one of the top universities in America, one of the top five universities and research institutions in America. They rose the university up 25 positions on the Time Princeton ranking of universities. And what was really surprising is while we have two other great universities in this state, certainly Cal Berkeley and the University of California, Los Angeles, UCLA, and some of our graduates of UCLA are here today, USC actually surpassed both of those great academic institutions in academics, passing them both in the GPA of entering classes of freshmen, and also exceeding both of them in their SAT scores for entering freshmen, and now lead them by over 100 points in each one of those schools. USC became in 1991 one of the great universities, and we began on a track that we then never looked back. We had 33 National Merit Scholars in our freshman class in 1991. Today, there are 232, and over 1,000 in the university altogether. In 1991, the graduation percentage was an abysmal 58%. Today, it is 88%. And in 2000, the university was named by Time Magazine and the Princeton Review of Colleges as the College of the Year. I remember a speech by Doctor Sample, and I want you to know my wife loves your speeches. Anyone who's sat through his speeches knows he peppers it with comedy and humor, but really important thought that is always at the root of his speeches. I remember a speech you gave a number of years ago about what it meant to be a student at USC and the concept that you were bringing forward of the Renaissance scholarships. And that was, my generation and most of you here today, when we went to college, we could expect to learn a profession and have maybe two professions in our entire lives. Today's graduating students are looking at at least four professions in their lives. And the University of Southern California had to position itself to train the students to be prepared for the new world that they were entering. And so we brought forth the Renaissance Scholarship Program, where we encourage students to take on not just one discipline, and not a similar discipline, but major in two different and disparate disciplines of study. And it has truly set an example for universities across America. I was fortunate to participate in a recruiting class for a Doctor Knott School a couple years ago for young students. We had a young man that I was working with who came here from Syracuse, New York, had a 4.0 and a very, very high SAT score. He had been admitted to the Harvard School of Public Policy, the Kennedy School, one of the finest in America without doubt. And when we got done with him that afternoon, he said, "I'm committing to go to USC." He's not a football player, but he was committing to go to USC's Public Policy School. And I asked him why he chose SC. He was an East Coast young man. He'd been accepted to Harvard. Why would you accept USC? And he said to me, very simple, "At Harvard, they expect you don't want to go there. And if you don't want to go there, somebody else will." At USC, they wanted me to come here because they want to be a better school, and I can help them be a better school, and they really wanted me. And that was the difference. That is the mantra that Stephen Sample has brought to USC, a success unparalleled in American modern history of universities. I can tell you, Doctor Sample, I have always been a proud Trojan. I started the school there a very long time ago. I ended with my master's degree a few years ago. I'm proud to be a Trojan, always have been. My son is a Trojan. But we have never, ever been more proud to be Trojans than we are under Doctor Stephen Sample. God bless you, and thank you.
Good morning. When I was growing up in the San Fernando Valley, my mom had not graduated from high school. No one in my family had had the opportunity to go to college. And when I was in high school, probably I didn't have a lot of opportunities ahead of me until I got accepted to USC. And had it not been for the education that I received at USC and the opportunities that that created for me, there's no question in my mind that I certainly would not be here in this chamber today. So I have a great deal of Trojan pride. All of us in the Trojan family talk about Trojan pride all the time. But when I was there in the class of 81, it was a good university. Because of Stephen Sample's leadership, over the last 19 years, USC unquestionably has become a great university of national prominence. Because of his visionary leadership, we've ascended to that level of greatness. It's a university that's recognized for its national prominence, certainly as Council Member Smith described, in the academic success of SC's entering classes and the academic success of its students and what they go on to after USC. It's risen to national prominence in innovation and trend setting within the world of academia. Certainly among the universities of the country, USC is at the very pinnacle in research. And as everyone knows, SC remains at the very, very pinnacle of national prominence in athletics and especially college football. But perhaps what's most important to us here today is the essential role that USC has taken in our Los Angeles community under President Sample's leadership. SC is the largest private employer in Los Angeles and in the region. USC is an incubator for the industries of the 21st century and helps small businesses through programs like the USC Business Expansion Network, working in collaboration with the Los Angeles Minority Business Enterprise Center. USC is the national leader in service learning through the Joint Educational Project, which I was able to participate in when I was at SC and helped students in a local elementary school. And that program has now gone on to set the national standard for service learning. Most recently, USC accepted the archives of the Shoah Foundation, which is now centered at USC, and the archives of the Armenian Film Foundation. So in those very important roles, SC continues to play a role today in bringing people together and making them realize the consequences of bigotry and hatred and helping to let this very diverse city that we live in advance beyond the restrictions and limitations that those evils beset upon us. So as Stephen Sample retires and as we recognize him for his visionary leadership, it's going to be a very hard act to follow at USC. But I believe very much that USC is on the continuing path to greatness. Many people don't know that President Sample was actually the inventor of the digital controls that many of us use on our household appliances. In fact, all of the household appliance manufacturers throughout the world are licensing his patent for that digital control system. And it's appropriate because as they would say in the Midwest, "USC is now cooking with gas." And we're going to continue to be for the next generation. So President Sample, congratulations on all that you've achieved at USC, and thank you on behalf of the people of Los Angeles.
We have some other members who would like to have their good wishes. Would it be appropriate right now?
We could do that first and then ask the President to come up and speak.
Very proud Bruin, but a fan of Stephen Sample's, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. And you're right, Council President, I'm a very proud UCLA Bruin, but I also know that in Doctor Sample, we've been able to see the significance and the contribution of the University of Southern California, USC. A few weeks ago, I was invited by Mr. Sales, the Vice President of Government Relations, and had the opportunity to sit in the Gailen Center in the conference room. And there you had students of many colors, of all backgrounds, immigrants, first generation, multi-generation Californians, all sitting there with their parents. Many of their parents did not speak English, but their pride was evident in their eyes and in their smiles. This trio program that USC sponsors and delivers to our communities, areas are being hit dramatically by this deconstruction you spoke of, of our public schools, where USC actually puts together the resources to train our kids for higher education. And other students that were there, they were going to many schools throughout the country. Yes, there was one going to USC, and there was one going to UCLA, and that was a good sign. But the fact is, it's that type of leadership you've demonstrated, sir, that allowed to create that type of focus that speaks to the welfare of the city, this region, as one family. And the great institutions that make up this area need to be upheld and supported. And you've done that over and over again in many different avenues and many different levels. I particularly am very, very grateful for the investment in the General Hospital. It sits right across the street from Lincoln Park in my district. I have seen time and time again the tragedies of our gang violence, and that's where they go, that's where they get treated. From more partly the jobs and economic development engine you've established there that has had a tremendous economic multiplier effect. And for that, I thank you, sir, for what you've done for the city, for this region, and for our future of this great, great country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, thank you. Mr. Parks, Mr. Perry, Mr. Cora, Mr. Smith. Did you have late communication papers because your speeches were extra special there? Good job there, Trojans. What a great day, Doctor Sample, to honor you and John Farrell Chamber here in City Hall. John Farrell, the great Trojan who did so much for the city and learned so much from the university. It's special. And just to follow up what Mr. Reyes said, USC and county, the relationship, the medical school, Norris, USC Norris, which saved my wife from her disease, the care that people bring is so special. And a future objective of Los Angeles truly should be to help that complex, USC County, USC Norris, University Hospital, and connect it to my alma mater, Cal State LA, down the tracks there, on the east side there, and make a biotech center in between for more jobs at the foot of Wilson High School and all that area there. That's a great objective, just like you've empowered the center of the city. And as you spoke outside, you talked about there, some people wanted to kind of steal you away from the center of the city where you found it there in 1880. But no, you stayed there and you enhanced, and Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry have been great in always keeping us informed of the right thing to do around the university. And your history in athletics is unparalleled in the Olympic sport. This city in the 1920s, many great things were built, including this grand city hall, but also the Coliseum, which is home to the Trojans now. But expanded in '28 for the '32 games, I believe over, and I just got to check this right here, 41 Trojans have gotten a gold medal, all since the 1912 games. That's a superior to anyone in the commitment that you've had in all athletics, in athletics, in music, in art, in dance, and everything is real important to all other studies as well. So I just want to salute you on behalf of the late, great John Farrell, who I worked for, who was my mentor. I also want to salute you as someone who loves the place that you are, what you mean to the city, and the revitalization of Los Angeles, the carry to Los Angeles. And there are great universities, and I liked what you said about Cal and UCLA outside, and maybe you repeat it here for everybody to see. But we can't forget good old Cal Tech, which has a winning football team every year because they never lose a game. Anyway, congratulations, Doctor Sample, for your great work.
Thank you.
Just for a moment, Lou Zamparini, great Trojan, great American, great Olympian, still living in my district, great guy, and I just wanted to throw his name out there.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Kretz.
Well, I agree with Mr. Parks. I'm glad that USC is in his district. As a UCLA partisan, but I have to say, even as partisan as I am, I have never seen a university make the kind of progress that USC has made in the period of time that you've been there. I think we are all proud of this university, as painful as it is for me to say. It just gets better and better. I'm so glad this is in the heart of Los Angeles and has done so much good. I still give Andrew Viterbi a hard time, my friend who taught both at USC and UCLA and made such a wonderful endowment at USC. But I think there may never have been a school that has made as much progress in as short a time as has become absolutely one of the great world-class universities in this country. And so I commend you for all the great work that you've done, and we all appreciate it in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too join in congratulating you. I have been to events where you've given your speeches, which people listen to those words, and they leave saying, "How did that happen?" And you've been successful in that. The building that you've done, while some people have left Los Angeles, you've invested, the university's invested millions and millions of dollars in the structures to expand the university, to have more students attend the campus for the education. And I just want to commend you on the many years that you've devoted and how you've been so cordial to me, other elected officials, the different events that we've been invited to at the university. It's been a wonderful experience. And in conversation with you earlier, you said you were going to continue in some activity at the university. Your sponsorship there is obviously very, very valuable. The people who are here supporting you, the people of Los Angeles appreciate all you've done, all those graduates, my colleagues here, how successful they are because of what's happened with that wonderful university. So congratulations. I wish you best of happiness and your continued success as a member of that wonderful university of Southern California. Thank you, Doctor Sample.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
If I can finally add my good wishes, President Sample. My father grew up right where the Harbor Freeway is now, just south of USC. His father was an immigrant from Mexico who had a barber shop very close to SC. And talking to my dad over the years, he said, "It used to be like there was a wall around this amazing place, but the community..." There's a couple cracks in the walls, but basically it was a fortress away from his neighborhood. He grew up, went to Washington High School, and he met professors from SC because they would stop by my grandfather's barber shop to get their hair cut. And that's how my dad learned about college and became the first in his family to go there. When an academic scholarship was recruited for football, he was the quarterback at Washington High School, which I thought was really cool till I learned they mostly had a running game. But he went to SC, decided not to join the football team, but was able to graduate, and the opportunities moved on from there. When I came back from graduate school, my first job was teaching at USC during the time that you were president, so I'm proud to have been one of your employees, and was there in 2000 when the university was named the College of the Year. It was an extraordinary place, a place that I miss every single day, the classroom, the students. And one thing that wasn't mentioned as deeply perhaps as it could be was your vision of bringing in the world to USC. It is the most international student body in the United States and perhaps in the world, which is a reflection of the city that it's in. And those walls that my dad once saw as a fortress have literally crumbled down, and not only have the walls come down, the university has turned its face to the community. In doing so, I think the effect that you've had not only on the neighborhoods around and on the young people who interact with USC, whether they're a student or a high school, a student going through a mentorship program on campus, has been incalculable. And your impact on all of us as leaders, you've been one of the few people in this country, I think, who's really honed in on leadership across... There's a lot of people talk about leadership in business, but you've really honed in on leadership across sectors. And I want to personally thank you for your notes, for the speeches that you send, something that I've said or that you've read, that you've commented on and seen something similar in your own works. You've always been thinking, and your leadership really showed the way forward with momentum and flexibility. When I was teaching there at USC, I think the first time I ever came to your office was with Martin Sheen in a protest. And there was a little dispute with the dining hall and dormitory workers. And there was a little dispute with the dining hall and dormitory workers over health care. And the flexibility that you showed to do the right thing for the workers that were there, but at the same time move forward in a fiscally sound way showed, to me, remarkable leadership, and I'm grateful, and I know that the employees of USC are grateful for that countless times over the years. So congratulations, not only on the impact you made on one campus, but on the city and the world beyond it as well. Congratulations.
Colleagues, I would ask that, and all those in the chambers, to give stand and give an ovation as we bring up the outgoing President of USC, Dr. Stephen Sample.
As I understand it, this is going to be Stephen and Catherine Sample Week. Is that right? Well, a whole week, so I wanted to know what you get when you get a week's. Do you get help on parking tickets or something like that, or free meals? Well, apparently you don't get those particular help, but I just want to tell you how appreciative Catherine and I are about this recognition. It's true that when I first got off the bus from Buffalo here in LA to become President of USC, many people came up to me and said, you know, Sample, Los Angeles is dead. It's not dying, it's dead. It's already passed life. So what you had to do is do a Pepperdine in '99 and get the hell out of Los Angeles. Move USC out of there. And there were some places and folks in Orange County and out in the San Fernando Valley who were interested in that proposition. But the trustees took the question very seriously, I took the question very seriously, and we came to the conclusion that the best interest of the University of Southern California and the best interest of the people of Southern California would be served by keeping the university right where it is, right in Los Angeles. And that's proven to be, over and over, it's proven to be the right decision for a lot of people. So anyway, this is a very special honor for Catherine and me, and I forgot what number this is in celebrations of Stephen Catherine leaving. But all it took was for my saying, you know, I'm out of here, and suddenly there's parties and receptions and special events. So I'm not sure exactly what the message is, but I'll take it as positive as I can. I'm sure many of you have heard the story about Jack Benny, who was at one of these dinners that was honoring him, and he got up to the microphone and said, as I would be inclined to say, I'm not sure I really deserve all these honors, but then again, I have arthritis and I don't deserve that either. So at least two other times in recent years, the people of the city of Los Angeles, acting through the city council, have set aside a day in honor of USC. In 2004, you declared USC Trojan Day, when USC had a triple national championship in football, women's volleyball, and men's water pole. And then in 2005, you designated the day for celebrating the 125th anniversary of USC's founding in 1880. Catherine and I, however, got not just this one day, but seven days. We didn't win an athletic championship. We didn't reach a significant milestone in the university's history. All that it took to trigger all of this joy and celebration was my saying, I'm out of here. Catherine and I, though, are really honored and humbled by this recognition. It comes from our adopted city, Los Angeles, and therefore holds special meaning. Now, I say adopted because like most people in Los Angeles, Catherine and I are not native Californians. We're both from the Midwest. We don't plan on retiring back at the Midwest, however. The weather isn't the entire reason, but 266 days of sunshine every year in Los Angeles is a factor. But the real reason is that Catherine and I love Los Angeles. We love its people. We love its vitality, its creativity, and yes, we love its quirkiness. The world is also coming together in Los Angeles, because Los Angeles is now being recognized, not just by us, but around the world, as the capital city of the Pacific Rim. And that's very important, because economically, we're probably entering the century of the Pacific Rim, the 21st century that we're in right now, and the hub of that whole community of languages and peoples around the Pacific Rim, the clear hub is Los Angeles, California. So for Catherine and me, we may be immigrants, but Los Angeles is in fact our home. The Trojan family is our family. We feel warmly embraced and deeply invested in our fellow Trojans and Angelinos. So in bestowing this recognition on Catherine and me, the city is actually recognizing the countless members of our Trojan family whose dedication and hard work have helped place USC ahead of the curve. It's true that in recent years, USC has come farther faster than any other American university. It's also true that USC has received strong support in this effort from the people of Los Angeles and from its political leaders. For the past 130 years, USC and Los Angeles have grown and have grown up together, and we've soldiered on despite economics, ups and downs, earthquakes and riots, and those gloomy pronouncements that Southern California is now dead. From time to time over the years, people have suggested that USC pack up and move to greener pastures, as I said earlier. But we eschewed those ideas. Instead, we redoubled our dedication to public service. We formed close partnerships with our neighbors, with school principals, with business owners and civic leaders. We worked hand in hand with them in order to make our neighborhoods safer, stronger, greener, and healthier. The results have been inspiring and far-reaching. Each year, our faculty and staff raise over a million dollars of their own money voluntarily given to improve the neighborhoods around the university. Nowadays, we hear people, you know, saying, where's mine? Where's my cut? What do I get? And why aren't people giving me what I deserve? And those are legitimate questions. But here's the faculty and staff, who are just everyday people like everybody else. They have their faults, and they have their greed to some extent. But isn't it wonderful that that faculty and staff voluntarily contribute a million dollars a year out of their own paychecks in order to improve the neighborhoods? Along the way, USC has earned national acclaim, the most recent of which has USC ranked number one in a survey of the best university and civic partnerships. So should we give ourselves a pat on the back? We've done it. We're number one in that particular area. Hell, no. We have too much more to do. One of the great things about USC is that we're not satisfied, we're dissatisfied, because we know we can be a lot better than we are. We've come a long way, perhaps a longer distance in less time than anybody else, but we can still do a lot better, and we're going to be better. So we want to thank the people of the city and its people for supporting the university and for working with us as our partners. Thanks to your support, serving as the President of USC has been far more than just a job. It's been a calling and a labor of love. And Catherine and I will treasure this commendation always. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for your involvement and your attendance today. If we can go back to the items that were called special in addition to this one, take up the next item, please.
Our next item, Mr. Zion, is item number 11.
Okay. Number 11 was called special for a card from the public. Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward on item number 11, please. Sorry, as he's coming up, why don't we go ahead? We have to take the vote on 20. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Item 11, Mr. Sachs, come on forward.
Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. This action you've taken is regarding funding in Proposition 40. And the reason I held this is I was wondering what the health is of Proposition 40. Recently, the LADOT was forced to raise fees and fares and fares because the money that supports it, I believe it's Prop R? No, not Prop R. Prop, Transportation Prop, Prop C funding, the city ran out of money. And they just discussed this in the Transportation Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, that the funding for LADOT from Prop C basically was bankrupt. And this is after two years of having budget deficits. So my curiosity and my question is, the concerns that nobody raised a red flag prior to this year that would cause these fare to be increased, and again, the health of Prop 40, because you're sliding down this banister and the public is getting the splinters. What is the health of Prop 40? Do we get an update on this? Do we have to be alert and aware of the different accounting for these different propositions so that we can be more in turn with decisions that are made instead of these fire sales that occur at the 25th hour that seem to be the council's rite of passage? Again, I ask, the status and health of Prop 40?
I would direct your attention, sir, to the state. It's a state bond, so we just receive what the state gives us. Prop 40 was a clean air, clean water bond, and that is available on the state's website there. And those bonds have already been floated. Go ahead, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item number 12 called special for cards.
Number 12 is next. I'd like to ask John Walsh to come forward on item number 12. Sorry, is Mr. Walsh on number 12? Mr. Dowd, if you could make room for him, please.
Mr. Dowd is my unidentical twin. HollywoodHighlands.org. Right now, there are two, three, four, five, six members sitting here, the rest in the back eating the catered meal that they get. HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns aging. So I'm an expert on aging. I've been aging for 66 years, and if I'm lucky, I'll last another three or four. We're 100% in favor of what's here, and we like to point out that the H word was used by the USC president in front of children. And I didn't hear you admonishing him when he uses profanity, but then again, I'm an Untermench, and he's an Uber Mench. He's a real white person, and some people think maybe I'm not really white.
Back to the item before us, and just as a reminder, on these items, as opposed to general public comment, we should be talking about the item that is before us. Mr. Kretz is here as well. If we can take Mr...
Press room.
Oh, they're in the press room, okay. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 called special for cards.
Okay. Mr. Walsh, if I could come forward on item number 13. After that will be Matt Dowd. Yes, item 13, please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I want to know how you can be off the topic on this item. I'll read it to you in its complete, completely. Proposed modifications to state law with possible city fiscal solutions. That's all it says. You're supposed to guess what it says. So anything I say is either going to be on the topic or off the topic. Why don't we have a full, what does this mean? HollywoodHighland... You can interrupt me later.
Okay, I just was trying to help you out. If you want some of the supporting material, it is always right with our CLA's office.
No supporting material. This is the official, this is the official agenda.
That is correct. So our next speaker is Matt Dowd. Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, I can ask you to please stay in order. We actually don't vote just on that. We vote on the entire council file with each of these. That council file is available for you and the public at the side here. We'd be more than happy to share that with you if that helps some of the detail of any of these items. That can be done ahead of our voting on these items as well. Mr. Dowd is our next speaker on item 13.
Thank you so much. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we've talked about it a lot, and basically, its bankruptcy, restructuring is one of the options available to the city. And restructuring involves eliminating some of the liabilities that are permanently dragging down the city. Now, the state is well aware of what's happening in all the municipalities, because the state is equally in trouble. And everything all funnels back to the state through taxes and, see, and they've already come in and taken the city's money. They took the petrol excise tax, any excesses, all these funds that the city had. But the state also tried to prevent the cities from filing bankruptcy. And this is the kind of thing we're talking about here, modifications to state law with possible city fiscal solutions, including Chapter 9 bankruptcy.
Mr. Parks is on. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item called special.
Item number 14 called special for cards.
Okay. John Walsh on item number 14, and then Arnold Sachs will follow.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, 100% in favor of this? I don't see why Mr. Rosendahl, he never stops talking. I don't know why he's not talking, speaking on this issue. This, okay, domestic partners. In fact, when the gay parade used to go through Hollywood before it got real uptown and left Hollywood, at the end of the parade, everyone was asked to march. So I've marched in several gay parades. We're 100% in favor of this? See, they want to make it sound like I'm some right-wing nut, you know? Take a look at this tie, peace symbol, peace symbol. I'm more left-wing than anybody, and I'm more any of this than anybody up here. HollywoodHighlands.org, find out what's really happening. PayPal, $200 collected in the last half an hour to replace Tom Labonge's stolen computer. Not.
Thank you, and I certainly would never call you right-wing, sir. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. You have one minute left, sir.
Thank you. This policy of concurrence, so would that be sort of like the policy you have in the council chambers? You just had six members go into the back, yet they were considered voting, have the ability to vote. Yet last week, when you had six members go into the back, you lost your quorum. So is it the back or the front, or the front or the back? I'm asking about the policy here.
Sir, I will clarify that, but if you could talk about what's before us. That has nothing to do with domestic partner benefits.
Ability to, for concurrence, do you have the same kind of concurrence?
I'm sorry, sir, that's out of order. I will answer that question, but that's out of order. Concur is just a word that you picked out of this.
Your policy, your policy of agreement.
Thank you very much. I will reiterate policies here, that if folks go into the far back room of the executive conference chambers, they need to take themselves off of the rolls. If they remain within these last two rooms here, including the press room, they're still part of this. We did not have six people even out of these chambers, though, during that time. Thank you, sir. You were off-topic, so you're done for today. Thank you, though. Well, let's go ahead. Mr. Rosendahl, I'd like to recognize you as the next speaker. I don't have a card for me, sir, on this. Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
I could be asked to come up real quickly and talk about this. The bottom line is, folks, us gay folks don't have the same basic rights as the rest of you do around this horseshoe. I might get elected by the people, but I don't have my basic civil and human rights. In fact, the IRS came down and slammed us on domestic partner relationships and taxes and everything else. And so thanks to Mike Fuer, a real leader in Sacramento, he's put a resolution in place, and it's basically telling the IRS to treat us equally. and it's basically telling the IRS to treat us equally, like they do heterosexuals. Tell us what this piece of legislation is about.
Actually, Councilman, you just did that. This is a resolution where the state of California would present its position to the IRS that they should reinterpret or review their policies regarding domestic partners, even, both same-sex and nonsame-sex domestic partners in relation to their filing of IRS papers. So this is putting forward the position the state of California is that the policy that IRS has adopted is incorrect, is incorrect according to the determinations from the Supreme Court, and that they need to evaluate that again in relation to how California law applies these kinds of rights to domestic partners.
Yeah, so colleagues, it's a no-brainer, at least from my end. It's outrageous that we are second-class citizens, us gay folks, and we don't have the same rights as heterosexuals. We can't even be in the military, though. I was in the military, I'm one of the few around this horseshoe who's been in the military during the Vietnam era. But you know, my domestic partner for the last 14 years, you know, will not participate in the same equality that heterosexuals have. And I hope our country lightens up. I hope this new president gets his act together and gets beyond where he's been mumbling the words about equality and civil rights and human rights, and actually shows some real leadership on that issue. We've had enough. I went back to Washington last fall, spoke before the Capitol to hundreds of thousands of my brothers and sisters from around the nation to talk about our basic civil and human rights, which we still don't have. And so we want the IRS. I pay my taxes on time. I don't even play loophole games or anything else. I'm willing to show my taxes for the last 20 years, but I don't get the basic support. I'm angry, yes, I'm angry. I'm angry at our great nation, and in some of its anger spills over into legislation. I ask the House of Representatives and the Senate of the United States to get its act together on this issue as well, and sit with the IRS and change the policy. But thank you, Michael Fuer, for your leadership in putting a resolution that maybe our California enlightenment will have some impact on the dark spots in Washington, D.C. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on item number 14. Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl. Just a little bit of additional background on this item. In 2003, I was proud to be a joint author of the California Domestic Partner Rights and Responsibilities Act, which gave registered domestic partners the same rights and responsibilities as heterosexual couples. The IRS released a memo that indicated that registered domestic partners could not claim the community property interest in the income of both partners that that legislation had given, as well as the same-sex marriages that had occurred in the state, that it only applied to husband and wife in a heterosexual marriage. However, federal law also holds that property ownership rights are determined by individual states, so therefore, the IRS should defer to California following its own regulations. So Mike Fuer's legislation calls upon the IRS to do exactly that, to follow its own rules, to let the states make these determinations, and to end this discrimination by the IRS not following its own rules. I agree with Mr. Rosendahl, it's important to pass this legislation, to send a message on this item, and it makes no sense to have the federal government actually violating its own regulations, and so hopefully, we'll bring an end to that.
Thank you. If we can please open the roll. I can ask for respect in the quorum in the chambers, Mr. Sachs. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item number 15, call special for cards.
Okay, item number 15 is next. And Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward, we do have a card on 15 for you. After that will be Dr. Clyde Williams. This is on the neighborhood council rollover.
Yes, so for the sake of the city council, I hope the federal government isn't listening. This one is very interesting because it highlights a couple of things. It's about neighborhood councils. But what we're doing is we're transferring 25,000 odd dollars out of the reserve fund. We're getting into the reserve fund to make this money for the South Roberts and Neighborhood Council, which I'm not against, but, see, they were inadvertently left out of the original council action. And I've got a rule, whenever I see the word inadvertently, it's like Greg Smith trying to get out of something, and that's another mistake. Oh, we inadvertently lost all the pension money, we inadvertently appointed commissioners who were hopeless, we inadvertently had to lose our budget and fire everyone in the city, and here's another one I'm going to highlight. We have to attack the general fund, the reserve fund, I'm sorry. The reserve fund now for a neighborhood council, they're overrated, I'm sorry, they're unpaid positions. There's no transparency to the people who make decisions in these neighborhoods, and mostly, they're development, developer types who want to take control, and it's an ego-driven So 25,000 out of the reserve fund now for another neighborhood council, you know, I'm in favor of them getting what everybody else got, but we inadvertently left it out. And whenever I see inadvertently, it's trying to make an excuse, and it's not a very good one, because you can do anything inadvertently, you know? I was inadvertently drunk in a city car and inadvertently hit a kid.
Dr. Clyde Williams was next. He is on item 15 as well. After that, we will go to item number 17. Dr. Williams?
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Inadvertently, we got used to that with Dunn. We'll probably have to get used to it with the community development. However, this is not transferring it back, no, I'm sorry, it is transferring it back to the neighborhood council. This is, remember that we lost a lot of rollover funds, which a lot of us were counting on for next year, but we got that taken away from us. So that was put into the reserve fund. All we're doing is getting it back. The issue would be, how about giving us all the rollover funds back? That would be nice, especially for this coming year, when we're going to have our regular budgets reduced. So I'd highly recommend that you expand it to give the neighborhood councils maybe 180 days to allocate the money that was taken away from us in the rollover funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Yes, Mr. Westen?
Yep, Mr. President, could we, I'd like to ask for reconsideration of item 7. Mr. Parks wants to, I think, add a friendly amendment to it.
Let's go ahead and do that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, Mr. Parks?
Yes, I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment, that we request the CRA, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, to seek a 10% reduction in these contracts and report back to the ACD in 30 days.
Okay, without objection, that'll be accepted as friendly. Did you want to speak on this, Mr. Kretz, or a different item?
No, on the previous item, actually. I just wanted to ask that it be sent forthwith.
Sure. Let's go ahead on item 7, as amended. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and if we can send, was that item 15 we just did, Madam Clerk? Send that forthwith, please. Next item?
Next item's item 17, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, Dr. Williams, item number 17.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Is transfer from the Urban Development Action Grants really just transfers? These sound like projects that the neighborhood councils would have done. Have these been vetted by the neighborhood councils? We're supposed to be looking at the overall programs for the various areas, and why not just give the money to the neighborhood councils and have them allocate it rather than piecemealing it out this way? So I'd highly recommend that you include the neighborhood councils, although they had no community impact statements submitted. So, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our last speaker on item 17. You have one minute, sir.
Yes, this is interesting, Kadenus, Alacon, and Kretz providing funds from the Urban Development Action Grant. But the interesting thing is that the biggest one, 80,500, is going to the Lowell Canyon and Fox Park Development Project, and it owes the other ones much less money, you know, good things like family literacy, mentoring and tutoring, tunnel security, school mentoring, after-school programs, you know, all good worthwhile things, but the alarm bell goes off, you know? See, the city of Los Angeles is driving me crazy when I, just when I come here once and I see what's going on, it's like, woo!
Do you have any more words, sir?
You know, I'm going nuts. Your attorneys drive me nuts. It's like, you're about to start a lottery next week in the face of a federal order.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll close our public comments on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 18, call special for cards.
Okay, Dr. Williams, item 18 is next.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Basically, the same as before. Is this a replacement for the special events? Because it doesn't indicate as to which neighborhood councils are involved in these farmers' market. We now have one in El Sereno, and we've done our second time, so we hope to get some of these funds also. So urban development action grants, it sounds like this has replaced these special events. I would highly recommend that all urban development action grants be vetted by the relevant neighborhood councils before they come to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. That'll close our public comment on that item. Oh, Mr. Weisar.
Yes, thank you. I think this is a very good thing we're doing here to allow some very important events in our communities to move forward, our farmers' markets. In El Sereno, we just opened up a new farmers' market about two weeks ago, and this will be covered by that plan, and we have a farmers' market coming to Bull Heights in the next less than a month. So this is going to help those farmers' markets continue, because, quite frankly, they're wondering that, given the new events policy, whether they were going to be able to move forward or not. So this is a good policy to move forward and allow those events to go through. Thank you for everyone who worked on this.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. And also, Northeast, now your staff and Mr. Reyes' staff have been working with mine on Glassell Park Farmers Market to come shortly as well. So good food in the Northeast and throughout Los Angeles. Please, if there's no other speakers on this, we'd like to open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special?
Item number 19, called special by Councilmember Han.
Okay, Ms. Han, number 19.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anybody here from Bureau of Street Services? Great. Colleagues, what this is doing is, I don't know if you remember, actually, it was a year ago that--
You can come to the table, sir. Come to the table.
It was a year ago that I brought forward the relinquishment of Gaffey Street. It was a state-owned street, you know, Gaffey is where the Harbor Freeway dumps in the gaffey, and it becomes a street. It was in great disrepair. We had been trying, really, for years to get the state to turn it over to the city of Los Angeles. They finally did, and they were holding it up when they, a year ago, when they were having budget issues. But anyway, finally, it's now in the city of Los Angeles. And so what this does is authorize $219,000 from that Gaffey Street relinquishment. By the way, we got money from the state, so they not only gave us the street, they gave us money for improvements. One of the things that was necessary for us to do was immediately begin to construct 47 access ramps, I like to call them curb cuts. So we will be constructing 47 curb cuts from the end of the freeway all the way to 9th Street in San Pedro. I think that's a huge improvement, obviously, for wheelchair access is the primary reason for curb cuts, but we also know that mothers pushing their children in strollers appreciate curb cuts at the intersections. What, I'm curious to know why it took us a year from the time that we authorized, you know, the Gaffey Street relinquishment process to go forward. I had a motion, I was looking at that, I introduced a year ago, actually, May 27, 2009.
I'm sorry, is that regarding the year, just for the access ramp issue only?
Yeah.
You know, I can't really recall why it took a year. I know that there were other logistic things that we need to work out, scheduling of our crews, but also developing our cost estimate, assessing the condition of the ramps, and all those activities took a certain amount of time, and there was approval process of the estimate itself. And once we settled down on that, then we were able to work with you to develop the motion to actually get the work done.
When will the work begin?
We're actually planning to initiate our work sometime next week.
Very good. How long do you think this project will take?
We're anticipating three or four weeks.
Three, four weeks? That's great. One of the things that I also find to be very concerning about Gaffey Street is a middle-of-the-street crosswalk that is a very dangerous intersection. It's the only crosswalk between the end of the freeway and the first signal at 1st Street. I know that I have wanted to use some, not necessarily this money for the curb cuts, but some of the Gaffey Street relinquishment money to either put flashing lights there or find a way to really improve the safety of that crosswalk. Can you tell me any information about that?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to talk about the crosswalk safety. We'd have to refer that to the Department of Transportation.
And do you know that there's talks going on to use some money to improve that crosswalk?
Yes, there's, I'm aware of several means I've had to do a whole slew of different type of improvements along that same corridor, crosswalk improvements, other street improvements are required to basically bring the street up to current code.
Right. Well, I appreciate this curb cut project, I think it's very important, but I do worry very much about pedestrians, particularly those who are using wheelchairs to cross Gaffey Street at that point. I really want to go on record saying, you know, I want to make sure we use some money to improve that crosswalk, put flashing signs, make it much more safe for those who do attempt to cross at that intersection. But thank you for this work. We'll keep an eye on you, and I think this is an important project for Gaffey Street in San Pedro.
Yes, most definitely.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Can I clarify matter for you? Okay, let's go ahead then and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 21, call special for cards.
All right, Mr. Dowd is out of time, but John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward, do you have a minute, sir?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S, dot org, one-half million visitors in the past six months. This is for bikes. We want people to ride bikes. That's great. And you may have to ride a lot of bikes if Arizona, the Arizona powers are, Mr. Pierce has threatened on television to pull the plug on 25% of our electricity if you cancel any Arizona contracts. He said that to the city council. I want an answer.
Thank you, sir. If you can bring that back to Bike to Work Day.
HollywoodHighlands.org. Let's find out. Mono a mono, let's go, Arizona. Let's screw 'em.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. As a point of information, I believe the DWP interim director has issued a comment on that as well. Be happy to share that with you. But this is on Bike to Work Day. Any other comments on Bike to Work Week, rather? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? I do have one announcement, that Maria, our clerk, this is her second-to-last meeting, folks, her penultimate meeting. We'll have one more meeting, and I look forward to celebrating, but preliminary, thank you for your second-to-last day. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to make an announcement that in the 8th District, particularly in light of all of the foreclosures, the 100 Black Men of Los Angeles are putting on a free seminar on Saturday, May 22nd, and it's going to be at 3701 Stalker in Suite-- on Saturday, May 22nd, and it's going to be at 3701 Stalker in Suite 309B, and that starts between 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., 12:00 noon. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that Mr. Butner, for the Department of Water Power, issued again, as Mr. Reyes spoke of earlier, that Los Angeles will continue to have power, as we own the both plants, part of them at the Palaberty Plant west of Phoenix and the Navajo Plant near Page, Arizona. They're generating assets for Los Angeles of long-term agreements. Wanted to make that statement.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is asked to reconsider the Bike to Work Week for some comments. If there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 21. Reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I know we went through a public comment on it, and then it went on consent and this and that. Bottom line is, this is Ride Your Bike to Work Week. Tom Labonge did it on Monday. He was dressed in his outfit from having done it. Bicycles are a key to the future of our city. We are sunny Southern California. We all should ride a bicycle every now and then, and we should do it for a lot of reasons, our own personal health. We should also do it because it will keep the air cleaner than the toxicity of the filthiest air in the nation is in our city. For the first time, we're focusing on the bicycle like we should. The car culture is over. It's time we have multiple cultures out there, including bicycling. Measure R and your commitment, colleagues, of 10% going to pedestrian and bicycles will set up a dynamic over the next few years that we've never had before. We'll finally get our bike plan out of conversations and into reality. I mean, to ride around and see all the other cities with more bike lanes and more showers and all these other things than we've done is really an embarrassment to our great city. We're on the right track, colleagues, and I just want us to shout out about this, ride your bicycle to work. I'm sure the young ones here in the room here, you all ride bicycles every now and then, don't you? See? And if we just listen to the kids, we would find that they are the mouths of children come some of the most profound comments. So, we want to thank you for that. We're trying to get everybody on a bicycle. This is the week for riding a bicycle. Applaud for that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. My pleasure, Mr. Rosendahl. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Mr. Kretz?
No.
Do you mind pressing your button? I'll let you do your vote first. So, okay. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Kretz?
Well, I just want to introduce and welcome Scott Riordan's third-grade class from Echo Horizon School. Echo Horizon's student body comes from all over the West Side, Culver City, West Hollywood, and the San Fernando Valley due to the school's unique mission. And among other things, at least 10% of Echo Horizon students each year are hearing impaired. The hearing impaired students work in the classroom with hearing students, and both groups learn from the other. And for the past two months, the class has been studying L.A. and social studies. We want to welcome them to City Hall. We hope you enjoy sitting, seeing L.A. city government in action, and if you stand up and wave, we'll recognize all of you. Stand up. Welcome. And also, we want to make one particular welcome. City Hall veterans here may notice a City Hall alum in the audience is one of the chaperones, so we welcome back the City Hall Monique Kagan. And we, and we also want to offer a particular shout-out to nine-year-old Joseph Kagan, who we look forward to coming back to City Hall at some point and following in his mother's footsteps, maybe as a council member, so.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. Welcome all, and we'll even forgive you for wearing Oakland A's caps as well. Thank you all for being here. Are there any adjourning motions today, colleagues? Yes, if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please stand up for our adjourning motions. I can ask folks in the audience as well. Thank you, students, for standing as well. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Ronnie James Dio. He was a superstar in the area of rock and roll and heavy metal in particular. He started off a band, became popular with the group Rainbow, then moved on to Black Sabbath, and he put Black Sabbath into a whole other realm and brought them to light again after the famous Ozzy Osbourne left that band. He went on to form his own group, Dio, and that's when I was in high school and went to go see him at the Santa Monica Civic Auditorium. He did a lot to continue the heavy metal, well, the beginnings of the heavy metal tradition were probably with him and a few other people, so I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory, somebody who contributed to rock and roll music and someone who a lot of fans are certainly going to miss him.
Thank you. We had no idea about your Hesha roots, but spoken like a true metalhead. Mr. Labonge?
And now, the Los Feliz area, there's many old-time Los Angeles families. Of the family, there's the great Claycombe family. Wilma Billy, affectionately she was known, Claycombe recently passed, the mother of seven, just a wonderful woman, lived below the observatory, great family. I ask we adjourn in her memory. She survived by her husband, as well as her seven children and many grandchildren. And the nice thing to know, both of them were great schoolteachers who were very involved in the year. She lived a good life. May she rest in peace. Willie Claycombe.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Kretz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Sister Mary Carol Ann Pajinell, the dean of students at Notre Dame Academy, who died on May 15th from a second bout with cancer. She spent decades doing selfless work for Notre Dame Academy students, for the poor and for the poorest of the poor in Africa. Her compassion and generosity of spirit was boundless, and so her loss is hugely felt, particularly on the Notre Dame Academy campus. Notre Dame was established in 1949. It's a private Catholic school located, hidden in a residential area in the 5th Council District on the West Side. It's known for its academics and for a very ethnically diverse community, and Sister Carol Ann was a longstanding and treasured resource of inspiration and joy. She was a mentor and teacher and friend to many of the students on this campus, and they and their parents and their families will all miss her greatly.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Zine?
President, Al Scoban, Police Commissioner, his mom passed away. Shirley Judith Scoban passed away in May 12th. Shirley Scoban was born Boston, Massachusetts, on March 24th, 1930. Arrived in California when she was 16, attended Dorsey High School, resident of San Fernando Valley most of her life, married to her husband Matt for 30 years, three children, Alan, the police commissioner, Michael, and Melissa. She will be dearly missed by her family and friends. Survived by three children, Alan, Michael, Melissa, Melvin Brown, five grandchildren, Jeffrey Scoban, Jennifer Scoban, Stempel, Matthew Scoban, Sarah Scoban, and Michelle Trode. May she rest in peace, Shirley Judith Scoban.
Thank you. Another adjourning motion, Mr. Rosendahl? Is there one more announcement? Mr. Rosendahl?
An announcement, not an adjourning.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, okay. We were talking earlier, folks, about the IRS, and you saw my energy about fairness and justice and equality. Just to let you know that this weekend, there's a coming-out rally between 4:30 and 6:00 for young people that have reached the point of accepting themselves and loving themselves, which is key for all of us to do. And this will be at the Father Sierra Park between Union Station and Olivia Street at 4:30 to 6:30.
Alvera.
Alvera Street. Dolores Huerta will be there, and Dustin Lance Black, who did The Milk Movie, will be there. And if you got the time, we would think it would be a good opportunity, especially for teenagers and young adults, to meet with others and get an appreciation and gay pride, which is coming up next month. That's 4:30 to 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer? Another announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have another announcement. Today, myself and Councilwoman Jan Perry, and with the support of Councilmember Tom Labonge, introduced a motion to proclaim May 16th through the 22nd as National Public Works Week, and we encourage all Angelinos to recognize the contributions of public works professionals to maintaining and improving the quality of life that we all take benefit of each and every day. So, National Public Works Week, May 16th through the 22nd.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements or adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will next be in session this Friday, colleagues, that is, the 21st, here in John Farrow Council Chambers. It'll be a busy day. We have some presentations, some important ordinances, so get your sleep and get ready. This meeting in Los Angeles City--